Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we want to look for the approval of the minutes of last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes from the last council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You want to take the roll?
Greg Van Leer. David Winters. Tom Pato.
Hi.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
The motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you. Any public comments, Mark?
No requests for public comments tonight.
Okay, thank you. So we open the public meeting. A is request for road closure. Scotty Lindley. Hello, Scotty.
Hello.
State your name and all that stuff.
Scotty Lindley, Kickstand Bar and Grill, 81 North Washington Street. We were looking for a road closure on May 22. We have a benefit motorcycle ride, 100 to 200 motorcycles coming in. The reason for the road closure is just for safety. It's for parking. That way they can all park on the road there on Washington. And we can get escorted out, get them out of the town for their benefit ride. And then they'll be coming back in at nighttime for dinner.
Are they going to spend a lot of money in our town?
I'm glad you asked that because we're very proud of this. Me and Shelby's own the bar now for about eight months. We're right at $24,000 in donations that we've been able to give locally. This would be a big benefit. I would, I'm hoping to hit six grand on this one. So.
Sounds good.
Yeah. The last one we just did was for a little boy named Mathias. And we hit seven grand for him. So we try to do one a month. We try to keep all of our business inside the four walls there. But some of these benefits, like these bike rides are large, so.
They'll be punished.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Any comments from?
Can we go ahead and address both dates that you submitted? You had a September 4th as well.
The September 4th is a, the town's been very good to us. We were going to do a community event. We're going to provide a top-notch magician, a couple bands, bounce houses, and some kids' games, all free to the public. We'd like to see everybody come down in lawn chairs and park them right there on Washington Street. And it's all free. So all the games and everything. Liquor will be kept inside the four doors that day also, the four walls. So.
Any more closures?
Just those two right now unless somebody needs this bad. We're open to any benefits though, so anytime somebody comes to us. But that's the only two that we have planned for the year.
What times of day are you talking about?
The motorcycles, motorcycles start coming in about 10:00 in the morning, 10:30. So we're talking probably about an 8 o'clock AM closure. And they should be arriving back between 4:00 and 5:00 PM. They're going to hang out for a few hours and donate, do some raffles and auctions and things like that. So probably be best just to keep it, in my opinion, closed to about 11:00 at night. And then my staff can reopen the, you know, we can move the barricades and reopen backup.
About cleanup?
We take care of all the cleanup.
Okay.
We also have security that we have. We'll have about 10 security people. And we're probably bringing portlets and things like that for the community event, not for the bike ride.
So come and use it, leave it as you found it?
Yes. Yep.
Very good.
President, we've been working with the downtown Danville partnership to draft a form to give persons who are requesting street closures. We also have a permitting process that they will have to follow. But then again, like I said, Ann Johansson has graciously helped us prepare a form that will get Scotty, if you guys approve this, so that he knows that he's checked with police, fire, Public Works, make sure everybody's been contacted. So.
Counsel, any thoughts? Do I have a motion to approve?
A motion to close Washington Street on the dates that Scotty has identified.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, you want to take the roll?
Greg Van Leer. David Winters. Tom Pato. Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald.
Motion's been passed.
All right. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
If you guys need anything on our end, don't hesitate to ask us. I mean, we've tried to change the place around from what it used to be, so.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yep, just let us know. All right. Thank you, guys. Mr.? Good seeing you, Gerald.
Mr. President, just a point of order real quick. We also had minutes for the work study to approve. So I'd make a motion that we approve the work study minutes from the 21st.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, you want to take the roll?
Greg Van Leer. Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald. David Winters. Tom Pato.
Motion's been passed. Five to zero.
Mr. President, before we move on to Section B, Kelly D. Benedetto of the Danville Chamber of Commerce would like to address the council about a road closure as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for fitting me in in short notice. I am here to because our farmer's market has exploded. And talking to my cohorts in other towns, we are officially the largest farmer's market in Hendricks County. So therefore, we have outgrown Washington Street. So I'm asking to also close down Marion Street, the backside of the square for Saturday mornings from 8:00 AM till noon.
Sounds like you've been working hard.
We have been. We have been. I also will say that Andy and I had a meeting, brief meeting yesterday morning, kind of went through the plan. Andy has it all planned out where he's going to have signs and everything for the road closures. So he is on board.
Okay. So you're waiting for an approval?
Yes, please.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the farmer's market additional road closures.
Second it.
A motion and a second. Jenny, take the roll?
Greg Van Leer. Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald. David Winters. Tom Pato.
Hi. Motion's been passed five to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm off to another board meeting. Have a good night.
B, Ordinance 2, 2021 Amendments to Salary Ordinance. Clerk Treasurer.
This is up for introduction this evening. This does not change our 2021 budget in any way. These were just inadvertently left off of the salary ordinance when we composed it last fall. There is, like in the email I explained to you guys on Monday, we are shifting around a couple of employees in my office. And we're changing the number of lifeguards for the park, but the overall dollar amount of the budget will stay the same.
Okay. So do you want us to vote or you want us to table it?
It's up to you guys. Either way is fine with us.
All right, let's vote on it.
You'll need to vote to suspend the rules.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Still moved.
Wait.
I have a motion and a second. Wait.
Well, and I think I've said this before. Normally, the process of suspending the rules to vote on an ordinance on first reading should be kind of an extraordinary step where, okay, we have to do this. This is something that we need to do at this point. If you start suspending the rules at every meeting to act on an ordinance on first reading, then you're kind of pushing off the procedure that's been set. So I'll just put that out there. I don't know if you need to get this in now or not, but that's just something.
Now, everybody's okay? We'll just, we'll drop it and bring it up the next meeting.
Will, are you in the process of hiring these lifeguards right now? Is there a sense of urgency?
Yeah, the, the goal is, we had, we had it a max of 19. The problem we have is people drop off, and so it's impossible to rehire. So if we hire high, and then once they drop off, we're right where we need to be. And that's, that's kind of the goal. And we're hiring right now. We're right at 19, which is our cap currently. And so we'd like to have the opportunity to do it. But also in there is the community engagement officer, but, or officer, community engagement coordinator. So I don't know. It's going to take me a little bit to hire them, but.
There's no real sense of urgency at this point. We're moving forward. Clerk Treasurer's guaranteed us that those positions are available, and we're moving forward.
Okay, we'll deal with it the next time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. B, Ordinance 112021, Establishing E Main Street Corridor Allocation Fund. Clerk Treasurer.
So this is to establish our new TIP district. We have new, two new TIP districts that the Redevelopment Commission has been working on in the downtown area. This is up for introduction as well this evening. This will just allow us to establish those funds and receive in the revenue.
Any comments? Since this is the first read, we'll bring it up the next meeting. D, Ordinance 1221, Establishing Downtown Main One Allocation Fund.
And this is the same. It's establishing that TIP district.
And any comments? We'll also deal with this the next meeting. E, Expired Warrants. Clerk Treasurer.
These are checks that haven't been cashed in 24 months allotted time. And this is just allowing me to void those checks in our system. We do everything we can to reach the people. Most of these are utility customers that have moved. We try to find them to get them their money. A couple of them are rental refunds where we just, we can't find them. So unfortunately, or for whatever reason, they haven't cashed their check.
All right. They don't want their money.
This just takes a consensus to accept these. And the state changed the statute to where it's $200 that the council needs to approve, but we had already worked the report, so I'm bringing forth the total for you this evening. And the total of everything is $753.24. And as you guys will recall, probably, my staff works very hard on this. Courtney kind of mainstreams it, and she works really hard. You guys had okay, well, you guys, the previous council had okay for us to start working with a collection agency. And we've just seen a huge difference. And so this amount, it's used to be around $2,000 or $3,000, so.
So you're looking for a consensus is all?
Yes.
All right. How does the council feel? We have a consensus?
I listed this needed a vote, but I'll defer to.
Does it need a vote?
I'll defer to Clerk Treasurer on that.
For the expired warrants?
The expired warrants you don't need, but you will need to vote on the bad debt write-off.
I defer back to the Clerk Treasurer on that.
Do I have a motion to approve? On the expired warrants?
We need to just have consensus on the expired warrants, right?
Right. You're just looking for consensus on this one.
Okay.
Looks like everybody's good. Alls you need is consensus on this particular issue, Mr. President. So you're good to go. I think you're ready to go. You're ready to move forward to the next item.
For consensus?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I understand, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You guys can have a comment consensus? Yes, it's all, yes, no problem.
So now I'll move that we approve Resolution 9, 2021, the bad debt write-off.
Because that's my fault. I'm sorry. I combined the two. That's totally my fault.
So where do we sit?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Jenny, you want to call the roll?
I'm sorry, who's second?
David.
Okay. Greg Van Leer. Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald. David Winters. Tom Pato.
Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you. So did you say we combined the bad debt with the other one?
Well, I confused the two. That was my fault. The total that I gave you was for the bad debt.
Okay.
So we did everything right, correct, Jewel? I just confused it because I gave the bad debt total.
Correct. So the, the, when you talk about the warrant, that's taxpayer money that's here. So it's not money going out. It is money that is being retained by the town. So that's why you just need consensus. When you talk about the bad debt write-off, that is money that you are not able to go and collect. So this is your attempt to collect debt. Amount has to be below, I think the new statutory number is 200. It used to be, I think, 40 before you needed approval. But with the bad debt, you have to take action to say, yes, we're willing to write this off so it can be taken out of the books because that is money that you, the town will not be receiving. So the only, the only issue there was that, you know, the Clerk Treasurer spoke about both issues at the same time. So the action that was taken is proper.
So we're done with this action now?
So we're ready for I, H?
Uh, G.
Has anything been signed and returned to you?
We're working on it.
Okay. I know you didn't want to move forward until everything was signed.
Yeah.
All right. G, Res-? Resolution 132021, Transfer of Funds. Clerk Treasurer, please.
So the council had approved for the $300,000 to be transferred from the Host Fund to the Host Future Fund, but we did not allocate that dollar amount in the budget. So this is allowing me to increase the priority projects budget $300,000 to show the cash being taken out and transferred to the Host Future Fund. The transfer's been done and completed. This is just allowing for my accounting software and bookkeeping to show the transfer.
Any comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 132021.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, take the roll, please.
Greg Van Leer. Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald. David Winters. Tom Pato.
Hi. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you very much. H, Resolution 142021, Host. Oh, yes, yes. We're trying to sign the papers in between motions instead of all at the end. Okay. H, Resolution 142021, Host Fund Budget Adjustment.
And this is allowing for the Host Fund to increase the priority projects like I was talking about from the.
Any comments? How about a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 14 dash 2021.
Second it.
A motion and a second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer. Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald. David Winters. Tom Pato.
Hi. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you very much. I, Ordinance 82021, Rezone of Property, 1928 East 10th Street. Tom Plana. Still the paper. Just get on the ready there.
The next item on the agenda is Ordinance 8, which is a rezone of property at 1928 10th Street. They went to the Plan Commission on the 12th of April and received a favorable recommendation with conditions, and those are within your packet. The petitioner is here, and they would like to do a short, brief presentation.
Mr. President, members of the council, good evening. My name is Brian Tuie. My address is 50 South Meridian. And given the dispatch with which you conduct business, this will be a very short presentation. I attend a lot of these, and I admire your efficiency. This is a case to rezone 20-some acres, as Lisa said, at 1028, 1928 10th Street. It's owned by the Danville Christian Church. Here with me tonight from the church is Jay Hodge, Dave Ruth, Ron Pruitt, Judy Jones, and Jerry Vornhold. Also here with me is Paul Clare from Pyatt Builders and Todd Pyatt, the owner of Pyatt Builders. So thank you for hearing our case. This is a smaller subdivision, only 20 acres. There are 66 lots. We met with the planners before we filed it. We came up with a number of commitments for architecture and the types of homes that we would build. And then at the Plan Commission, they asked us for another six commitments, again, related to landscaping, separation of our subdivision from the neighboring property owners. They asked for an installation of a park, certain evergreens to be added in in the common areas. The petitioner agreed to all those commitments, and they are included in your ordinance and in the packet that was sent. Lisa, how do I move it forward? Oh, thank you very much. If it just goes, so here's the site, members of the council. It's on the north side of 10th Street. As I said, it's about 20 acres. It's right across the street from a subdivision. Next slide, please. We think it meets the comprehensive or the strategic plan. It allows for a broad range of quality housing that is accessible, affordable, and appropriate for all levels of income. These homes would cost between a quarter of a million dollars and $350,000 in today's prices. We estimate the homes will be north of $300,000 at an average. Next slide, please. So we had a plan that showed 66 of those lots. Our neighbor right across the street expressed some concerns about our street coming directly into his driveways. We met with him, and we agreed to move the driveway eastward. Next slide, please. I think that, that shows how we moved the driveway after a meeting with our neighboring property owner, the closest owner. Next slide, please. We have a common area of about 25% on the site. Next slide, please. These are the types of homes that Pyatt Builders would build. They've, they've had success in Hendricks County in a couple of different subdivisions. They also build in Carmel and in Noblesville and in Whitestown, so in Boone County. These are the homes that would cost between $250,000 and $350,000. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. These are the interiors of these homes. You can see that they have quality finish, cabinetry, high-end countertop site. There's probably a name for that quartz or something that, but it's, it's, it's nice stuff. I've been in their homes. Next slide, please. Thank you. Next slide. Next slide.
So all that interior comes standard? Ah, I see a smile.
No, sir. Not all of that comes standard. But they, they outfit their models with that so that they prompt people to buy.
So you're showing us the top of the line?
I'm showing you samples from a model home, yes. Yeah, it's, it's fitted nicely. No doubt about that. Next slide, please. Next slide.
What does it look like if they don't take any of the upgrades?
I'll ask Mr. Pyatt to respond it since he'll build it. Maybe go back through those slides. The interior.
So I only have a certain amount of money, and I say I don't want to take all these things. Do I get a cardboard counter or?
No, no, we do a very nice included standard fixture or finish level. So cabinets, there are six different wood type color options that are there. We do not use oak like was common in the 1990s and some of the things that you would have seen back then. So very nice finishes on those, vinyl flooring. You have the laminate countertop upgrades. You have windows throughout. You get raised panel interior doors and a number of different style options to choose from there. Six-panel, two-panel, two-panel arched, different things along that nature. And we do get a lot of people that do, choose to do some of those upgrades. Typically, we find, as, as Mr. Tuie had mentioned, that, that average, while we expect base prices to start around $250,000, we expect that average price to be a little bit north of 300. We're seeing most people today put in 30,000 to 40,000 in options, just as a, a lot of those are structural options as well. So they'll do covered porches in the back and different things along, along that nature. So you get a very nice fitted interior and a lot of choice to choose from as well.
So if I don't have a lot of money on the outside, how low down can I go? Can I get rid of?
That would be the.
What is the option for me as a person that's trying to save?
Yeah. So on the outside, we wouldn't go any lower than what you would see there. So that would be the, the base level interior. So there'd be a 25% masonry on the front of the home. And then a number of different architectural elements as well. So on this one, you'll see the craftsman type of trim up in the top in the gables. So it's a board and batten combined with some wood trim pieces. Some of the floor plans have dormers like you see up there, different front door options. And this would also have an upgraded vinyl siding as well, which in, in that, there's a number of great deep color choices as well that provides a lot of variety in streetscape, variety.
Anybody else?
We checked with the school superintendent. They said they could accommodate this. We did a traffic study. They said that the intersections around there could cover this and handle the traffic from these 66 homes. The Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval. We, we agreed with the Plan Commission's additional commitments that they asked us to insert into the ordinance. And with that, we'll try to answer any questions you might have and respectfully ask for your approval. Thank you for your time.
Any comments from the counsel?
If I could add some of the, I did not mention the conditions of approval, but I think I'll go ahead and do that just so everybody knows what those are. They included in part of their PUD to have windows on all sides of the homes. They are doing all homes on the west side of the main entrance. And I don't know if you can go back to that. There was some concern from some of the adjoining property owners. So on the left lower portion of this property, they included additional landscaping for the first five lots going into that subdivision. And also additional rear elevation, or rear elevation architectural. So that could be a raised deck, a bay window, bump outs, covered patio, not limited to those things. And those same commitments were given to the lower right-hand side for the first three lots going into that subdivision to kind of, you know, offset the appearance to the adjoining property owners. They also included on the north end, you can see like a little, it's actually a little bit lower than that, Will. It's like a pie area that's got some landscaping. They are including some playground equipment in that area. And yes, right there. The other thing is they said they would put in street signs and lighting compliant with the town's requirements. And this is up for a vote tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the council?
I have, I have a comment. Shocker. I've heard from a number of stakeholders, including business owners, residents, and others in the town that we're adding way too many houses too quickly. We have a major development that we're still trying to work our way through out west. I, I like the idea of, and I don't know if we're going to talk about this later, the public event that we're having next Wednesday. I think those are excellent opportunities for us to meet with the public, to talk about our plan, our strategic plan, what goes into the planning process, growth, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that's, that's good to give folks the opportunity to hear what we have to say. And, you know, personally, you know, maybe, maybe we should take a pause on some of these, especially since we're still effectively, effectively negotiating, you know, the, the size of the development out west. So just my opinion.
This is the subdivision we turned down last year?
I think it was two years ago.
Those are two years.
Yes, it's been, this is the second request for PUD. They also, there was a request for R2 because it's currently R1. That was turned down as well.
Any more comments from the council? Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve Ordinance 8 dash 2021, Rezone of Property at 1928 East 10th Street.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, take a roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
No.
David Winters.
No.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Now, motion's been passed three to two.
So, Chris and David, you won't sign this?
Sure.
Okay. So, the next item up on the agenda is ordinance number nine. This is a request for an annexation at 589 South 75 West. It's just north of Lincoln Street on Mackey Road. It's on the east side. The petitioner is requesting this annexation as they are in need of wastewater service. And it is the public hearing.
Mr. President, you'll need to gavel the public hearing open, take public comment, and then gavel it closed.
So, you want me to open it for public hearing?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. You'll need to open it for... Sorry, this isn't working.
Do I need a motion for that?
No, sir. You'll need to gavel open the public hearing, take public comment, and then gavel the hearing closed.
Okay. The meeting is now open to the public? Nobody's there, so the meeting is now closed to the public. Any comments from the council? I have a motion to approve.
You won't need it right now. It'll come up for approval either the 19th or the 1st of June. I can't remember what our timeline was on it. I'll have it written down here. You won't need to do anything tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Capital expenditure request, large format printer-scanner. Tom Planner?
So, this is a request for capital expenditure for large format printer and scanner. The reason for this request is that we are... We do not have the ability to copy large plans and scan plans. So, when someone comes in and applies for building permits, we really don't have a good way of uploading those files to our new software. This will also give us the ability to print maps instead of on an eight-and-a-half by 11 sheet, 24 by 36. It's possible that at some point in time, we may come back to amend the fee schedule if we start seeing people requesting copies so that we can put a charge in there for those copies. It is to be used by the other utilities. They are contributing some money, and I think there was some money that was from the host fund, I believe, Jenny. Is that correct?
No, this is all coming out of utilities, right?
Okay.
No?
No.
Host fund, which was approved at our host fund budget meeting for the priority projects. Do you need a copy of that, Mrs. Jenny?
No.
Okay.
And I've also included in your packet a quote from the company. They actually upgraded this plotter scanner and stuck with the same price for the previous one, which had like one drawer. This has two drawers, and it's got some other features on it.
Okay. So, we get a better one?
Yes, for the same price.
Any comments about the scanner?
An idea.
It is a good idea, but it is... It will be our machine and not leased, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. And in that price is includes training, setup. What was it? There were three things: training, setup, and delivery, I think is what it was. Yeah. So, yeah, I think it's well-needed, and I think it'll be a benefit to everyone.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the capital expenditure request for the large format printer-scanner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been approved, five to zero. Thank you very much, Tom Planner.
Mr. President, if I could just have like a minute of your time. We were going to announce this at the work-study meeting, but since it ran over, we are planning a meeting next Wednesday from 4:30 to 6:30. It's an open house for our comprehensive plan, and we would really like to have a large turnout. We need everyone's input, and it's in Bostick Gym.
Will that be a public meeting to the extent that we can have the council members there? Like a work-study.
My recommendation would be to advertise it so that if more than three council members want to be there. I know that I think at the last meeting, there were two at that one. I can't remember. But my recommendation would be to go ahead and advertise it. That way, you don't run afoul of any issue.
I'll take care of it tonight.
Isn't there a park board meeting at 6:00 that day?
It's been moved.
Oh, it has.
I apologize. I'm incorrect.
Yeah, the rec impact fee process is going on there. So, there'd be a park board meeting right after that, and then right after that will be a planning commission meeting just for the rec impact.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Need a vote?
I forgot about that.
No.
You're okay? You're okay. Hey, capital expenditure request? Nope. L. Capital expenditure request, road impact fee study. Assistant Town Manager.
So, as you know, I was kind of tasked with this probably, I would say, about a year and a half ago. We had several meetings and just kind of researching the ideas of we have some very poor roads. We need another funding source to take care of the roads, which will also help with some of the traffic issues that we have, improve intersections and stuff. And so, this was a route that we believe we could take to start looking at taking care of those pieces. Matt Brown in the back there from A&amp;F Engineering is the one who's going to be doing the study. We've met with him a couple, I don't know, four or five times already, trying to make a decision and dwindling his price down. And we've come up with a pretty happy medium, I think, that everybody's happy with. Really made sure Lisa and Andy are on board because really it affects them more than anybody. And the road impact fee, it can also be negotiated. So, it's with some of those items, when neighborhoods are coming in, we can improve intersections and stuff like that. It's really a route that we need to look at, you know, for the future. You know, our roads are kind of dying, and we need to put some love back into them. So, the impact of the new things that come in can help pay for some of those problems. So, whatever areas we study are the areas we can use it on. So, we had to be real selective with where we think problem areas are in Danville, which was really kind of easy. We were spouting off stuff left and right. And so, a lot of those, the new developments can help kind of pay for some of the other things beyond the new development, which is kind of nice.
What's the timeframe on completion of the study?
So, it'll take about a year to do this study, and then once it's enacted, you know, if it is enacted after the end of the year, it's six months before we can start collecting the fees or negotiating the fees in there. So, and yeah, so it hasn't... We just didn't think about this in a whim. It's something we've been working at for a while. And what's cool about this compared to the rec impact fee is you can actually use the dollars to help pay for the study, which in rec impact fees, you can't do that.
I was going to ask you, how long would it take to recover our fee for that?
I mean, it just depends on those developments, too. And business development will help a lot with that. And so, you know, we've been working on that, trying to recruit some businesses in as well.
Okay. Any thoughts anymore?
Do you have a comment?
No, I will hit it. I mean, A&amp;F is a group that we've worked with in Westfield and Sheridan. They... Westfield's had a road impact fee for a while. They do significant. It's utilized in large part almost as an economic development tool as well, where they give credits back, and you can negotiate that through... Sheridan is using it because they're getting a lot of development up there right now because that's the next place in Hamilton County. And so, it's been a great tool for those communities. But you are looking, before you will see a dollar, you're looking at about a year and a half. And then none of the projects that are in... Approved and going will this be able to apply. It's all prospective, not retrospective. So... And when does that cut off start? Is that when we pass this or when that's in place? Or when it's finished? So, when you pass the ordinance, anything that's been approved prior to the passage of that ordinance essentially is... Gotcha. Okay. You're done. That six-month period is really to allow all the developers to get their heads around what this is and how it's going to impact their projects moving forward.
It's based on permit polls, though, right? Yeah. So, it's not approving the project. It's when they come to pull the permit.
When they come to get the permit.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, come up here. It's a big price tag. I don't want to do it by myself. You guys have any questions? Matt Brown with A&amp;F Engineering, 8365 Keystone Crossing, Indianapolis. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. I think Will's done a great job. Your staff over the last... How long has it been? I don't know. They've been excellent. They've been great to work with. I can't wait to work with them further in the process. Somebody asked, I can't remember who asked, about recouping it. Just... I'll just throw out a rough number. But when you're talking a home, a home's going to generate 10 trips a day. So, and if your road impact fee is a thousand or $100, that's $1,000 a home. So, if, you know, it doesn't take many homes to get that back. So, and homes are not where you're going to make your money. You're going to make your money on big commercial projects or even small-scale commercial projects. And medical offices generate a lot of revenue as well. So, there's a lot of resources to gather this. Unlike the rec that I know you guys have, it applies to basically every land use. It's not just held to the residential. So, it really opens up opportunities to capture a lot of revenue.
So, from what Will said, there were certain areas possibly, or streets, or even roads, that had to be identified?
Correct. There has to be a zone improvement plan identified, which is basically an area that you study. And within that area is where these funds can be applied. And it's... We did shrink it down a little bit to reduce our costs. But I think the area, given these guys' expertise in Danville, I think by sitting down and us looking at different areas, I think we have a really good area that, you know, it's not like it's so small that we're not ever going to be able to capture funds or apply the funds.
Any one area stick out more than others?
Your packet. We included a diagram in your packets. It's attached to this request.
Ah, lucky there. Somehow missed that.
So, basically, is it shown in black probably?
We appreciate it.
There you go. That area outlined in the black dashed line. So, as you can see, it's a fairly large area, really, when you're talking about the amount of intersections. And then some of the intersections are excluded to get the price down as well. The intersections that they did not believe that there would be a problem, we'll just collect data at. We won't have any analysis of them, but we'll have the data collection for them. We were also kind of looking at it from just traffic in general, too. So, and, you know, I think are the orange ones the most important ones, right, that we thought were the biggest issues that we have right now? And we can only use those dollars to improve those areas that we do the study on. So, you know, if you look at it, you think it's going to be this big, large income, but it's not really. I mean, you're talking maybe being able to do a project or two from this. And that's where we just have to follow it, stay up with it, and then do the same thing. If we can fix, you know, two intersections with this, it's probably worth it in general. Don't you think with the income-wise?
I think it might be.
Even more than that, yeah. So, Cartersburg Road is what I... That intersection, I mean, it's always been on our minds, and we still, you know, we haven't touched the, what is it, like the five-star intersection there. We have some models to change it, but we just have never had the dollars to do it. You know, we'd have to skip paving for like three years to be able to do it. And, you know, we need to pave. If you fit on our roads, you know, we got to stay on top of that stuff. So, we're just trying to look at other ways to help, you know. You know, this can help with that traffic side as well, you know, once we grow into it a little bit.
All right. Any more comments? A motion?
Make a motion that we approve the road impact fee or impact study fee.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been passed, five to zero. Thank you very much.
So, just another little explanation on there. There'll be a committee that actually decides it of the, you know, committee can be... Whatever we decide the committee is. Usually, we like to have a developer. We like to have a real estate agent following the same, really following the same as a rec impact fee, because you want them to kind of set that, because you want to make sure your businesses are taken care of as well. So...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Coming. That was just the top of it. That covered what you said. It broke apart. Okay. Contract with Waste Management for street sweeping.
We were contacted by Waste Management to sweep the street between US 36 and the entrance to their facility off of Twin Bridges Road. It's approximately 5,470 feet. I've talked with Superintendent Pitcher. He is fine with this request. In return, they agree to pay us $350 a week. This will exclude town holidays and weekends. Also, they agree to allow us to dump the spoils from this street sweeping in their facility at no charge. They also agree to allow the street sweeper to fill its water tank on their meter. And they also agree to, when public works, wastewater or water, do an excavation. As long as the spoils are clean, they will accept those at no cost as well. And I'm seeking approval. It will call for a signature by Council President.
I'm having a hard time believing they don't already have one.
Have one, but it broke down, and this agreement is actually cheaper than buying a new one.
Did it break down because they had to sweep up all kinds of gnarly stuff off the road?
I'm pretty sure they probably have that thing running a lot more than we do. They were probably sweeping far more areas than we do as far as, you know, junk. So, Superintendent Pitcher is working with the Clerk Treasurer, I believe, to... I'm wrong. Correct me to put this money in a replacement fund. Is that correct? me, to put this money in a replacement fund, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so all the money we get from this, Andy will be putting back in a fund so that when his breaks down, he'll be able to replace it.
It's so new. And then I have a question for you, Andy, when are we going to start this for, when should we start invoicing? Okay.
Right. Everybody submit their comment.
Does only one person drive that street sweeper?
Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the contract with Waste Management for street sweeping.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Banleer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye, motion's been passed, five to zero. Thank you very much. And renewal of, oh, got this here, sorry. There we go. And renewal of CFI for the Justice Corporation tax abatement, Town Manager. So whenever someone applies for a tax abatement and it's granted through the town, they have to provide us with a CF1 form showing that they're either in compliance, not in compliance. This is from the Justice Corporation, they are still in, under construction, therefore we believe that they are in compliance with the current tax abatement. This requires the Council President's signature and an attestation by the Clerk Treasure of the designating body. This will require a vote. Are you reading or, you're waiting? Okay, no comments. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of CF1 for the Justice Corporation tax abatement.
And so the wording of that, my recommendation would be, make a motion to find that CF1 is in substantial compliance with their tax abatement. Is it, the options are substantial compliance, not in substantial compliance, or have them come in to talk to you, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the CF1 is in substantial compliance.
Second to that.
I have a motion and a second. Jenny, take the roll, please.
Greg Banleer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Has been passed, five to zero. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, Mark, I think it's up to you now. So hopefully you all received the letter from Don Mason today that I forwarded to you. We were one of the first communities to approve the resolution and get approved by FEMA for disaster relief if something should occur. We met with our department heads Monday at the Mayberry Cafe. We decided to kind of shake things up a little bit, so we had a noon meeting, had lunch there, it was very nice. It got to the point where I couldn't keep up with them, so I asked them to send me the documents that they were talking about, so. The planners held design review committee, preparing for comprehensive plan open house, gathering of CF1s, preparing for plan commission meeting on Monday, preparing for plan commission meeting on Wednesday, which is a part of the parks project, and then working on census map updates. Did I miss anything, Lisa? Public Works, they did, had the replacement of the backhoe, it was delivered Friday. The thumb was installed, I, I don't know what that is, I apologize. I'm assuming it has something to do with the way it claws in, okay. Was out removing sidewalks Monday at lunch, so they had two sidewalk install replacements this week through the cost sharing program, one on East Street and one on Jefferson Street. Farmers Market begins Saturday, he met with Kelly on road closure details, and he's meeting with, met with Ann yesterday from the downtown partnership to work on the square for the summer, establishing goals and concerns and responsibilities. Did I miss anything, Andy? Parks Department, the temporary pool paint job, white complaint, black is this week. They'll have water in the pool by the end of the week. He worked with the National Honor Society, was it last week? Yeah, Tuesday, last Tuesday, and it went very well. Rotary Corps worked at Jack Willard Park on Tuesday, actually think it's Rotary. Speaking at Leadership Hendricks County on Wednesday, that was today. We're installing the flagpole here at Town Hall, there in the roundabout where the bell is. Friday is the Chamber of Golf outing, which I will be out of the office that day, but as always, I'll be available via phone. Trails and Parks of Hendricks County meeting tomorrow, and he's setting up a traffic meeting for Tuesday. Did I miss anything? Everything? Police Department, as always, Chief Hilton's a man of many words. Kennedy Wilson is doing a great job in the academy. Brandon Lynn is doing great with K-9 School, and the Investigations Division's been busy with the school case, three rapes, one shooting investigation in the last few weeks. Interim wastewater superintendent, Tony Kirkpatrick, have, they've been cleaning the tanks that hold the chemical for the phosphorus removal, means nothing to me. Will, will be cleaning sewer mains on Lincoln Street, will also be running the sewer main camera in the area of Lincoln Street. Did I miss anything, Tony? Matt couldn't be here tonight, Matt Allison with the Water Department. The crew's finishing upgrading meters, normal operations department. The stir motor that you approved, the last meeting's been replaced. North Elementary Tower seems to be working well. 300 East Kensington, the water main, there is ongoing, they're moving along for pressure testing. The skater, skate a computer for the water plant need replaced, he's actually done the replacement, I think he did it today, if I'm not mistaken. I went ahead and authorized that, think Jenny did as well, based on the emergency order of our, that we have the ability to do, but he will come before you at the next meeting with a capital expenditure request. And he should be getting his consumer confidence reports ready for printing and hopefully mailed out in the next week. And the administration received a recycling grant, you'll see the water cooler out here be replaced with a bottle fill station and along with a combination water, yeah. She's also gotten a large recycle cart so that we can start moving more recycling out of the building and back to them to the dumpster. She's, she's worked on a FEMA grant and the Community Crossings Grant, we did receive a small portion of the Community Crossing Grant, we will be reapplying in June. There were some discrepancies in what they believed were our road miles and what we believed were our road miles, and unfortunately, the persons administering the grant always win, so we are, we are redoing those. And then she'll be attending another grant school, I think up at Purdue, something like that, so that's all I have tonight. Okay, thank you very much. Jenny, anything?
Yes. Yesterday invitations were sent out for Jerry Crisp Retirement Open House, which is May the 27th from 4 to 6, so I just wanted to remind you guys of that. It, it will be held at Courthouse Grounds. And I would like to schedule a, what I'm going to call 101 Budget Workshop. I think it would be helpful for the council, and if the department heads would like to attend, Taflaw's going to assist us with that. I would, I'm looking at a date of Wednesday, June the 9th, from 6 to 8, or Monday, June the 21st, from 6 to 8, if either one of those dates would work for you guys. Either the 21st, which is a Monday night, or Wednesday, June the 9th, which is our off week of a council meeting.
Wednesday's nice, I don't mind right now.
Yes.
Wednesday's good?
Nice, the Wednesday. June the 9th, okay? Okay, we will schedule that then, and you'll advertise, Mark?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Schedule it for Wednesday. Six to eight. I'll just be kind of, we'll do a little presentation, and then you guys can ask questions. And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Great.
Yes. So this week, I spoke with, or spoke or replied to various citizens concerning growth in Danville, encouraged the public to attend the, the comp plan meeting next week, unfortunately I won't be able to attend, and I did speak with a citizen up on 10th Street, who owns property up on 10th Street, about possibly doing an annexation, so Lisa, after the meeting, I'd like to talk to you about that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
Real quick, I did attend the Hendricks County Recycling District meeting. Mark, you and I talked briefly about, you know, the possibility of increasing the tipping fees, that's on that board's shoulders, so nothing is, no decisions have been made, but it is in the process of talking through it now. Then I did have one-on-one with Lynn, the director, so I think we've got some good ideas, but nothing's going to be anytime soon, so. And then, thank you to all the staff, what we're hearing in these meetings with all the stuff going on and your updates at the end, it's pretty exciting times to be here in Danville right now, we got a lot going on. I think, you know, with the partnership, the chamber and the town, we're all working together, and it's good to see, so. And congratulations to the softball team again tonight, they won again, and they are now 17-0, number one in the state.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? Will? Nobody? All right, claim docket.
Move to approve the claim docket.
Second.
We have a, a motion and a second? Everybody in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passed?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Is everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's closed.